Richard Project. Michael Cornell.
Here.
John Gibson here. Richard Keefen. Diana Iverson. Howard Zimmerman. June Huesman. Gibson Nielsen.
All right, with that, I just want to thank everybody for their continued interest in this process. As everybody knows, it is a lengthy process. We're working our way through it. We're doing pretty well. I just wanted to take a quick second to remind everybody, regardless of any opinion or anything you any feelings you may have, witnesses are brought here to gather information from and we hope that you can at least give them the opportunity to have your attention while they do present either way. So with that, I believe it's the zoning word of appeals opportunity to question Dr. Punch.
Mr. Chairman, at the end of the meeting, it suggested, and I think Dr. Punch would like to kind of expand on a couple of the ideas that were yesterday because he was running through pretty fast at the end. So if he could have just a few minutes, I apologize.
Okay, yeah, I did in fact say that. So, Dr. Punch, go ahead and anything you'd like to add this evening? We did cut it short on time, but it was getting pretty late for everybody.
It was a long presentation. I would like to basically emphasize some additional points relative to my question before in the slides. It probably was one of the most important questions. It was, what evidence is there that noise generated by wind turbines leads to adverse health effects in humans? I'll put a couple of slides, assuming everybody has a copy. Studies in slide 39 all show that sleep disturbance is caused by exposure to low-frequency noise, which includes wind turbines. Although that particular study by Leventhal in 2003 did not talk about wind turbines specifically, but certainly wind turbines are known to produce low-frequency noise, including infrasound. Leventhal in the 2003 study that I mentioned was one of the authors of the AWEA-KENWEA paper. Papers, that is, of the Kenwea-Awea paper in 2009, which is a review paper. He quotes, quoted, the World Health Organization at that time as saying, "It should be noted that low-frequency noise, for example, from ventilation systems, can disturb rest and sleep even at low sound levels. When prominent low-frequency components are present, noise measures based on egg weighting are inappropriate." He said that a pretty long time ago, often through studies we've been talking about. He basically now denies that wind turbines cause adverse health effects. I find the discrepancy in his testimony and in his writing very interesting. The Minnesota report in that slide mentions that sleep disturbance is caused by many low-frequency noises, including wind turbines specifically in that study. In her 2009 conference paper, Patterson, it is pronounced Patterson, I think, stated that sleep disturbance results from exposure to industrial wind turbines. In her 2011 paper, which was a peer-reviewed journal article, she analyzed three field studies. Her findings were that sleep, headache, fatigue, tension, stress, and irritability were all affected to a statistically significant degree by wind turbines. And when I mention turbines tonight, I'm always talking about industrial-grade or industrial-scale turbines. On slide 42, I mentioned the three cross-sectional studies that have been done. One by Shepherd and colleagues in 2011, one by Nissanbaum and colleagues in 2012, and Tyler at ALK in 2013. All these studies showed a strong relationship between sleep quality or sleep disturbance and wind turbine noise exposure. I would also note that, again, that cross-sectional studies are embraced by epidemiologists as some of the best kinds of evidence to show causation. Some of these same studies showed a reduction in the quality of life for people living near these turbines. In terms of the issue, one or more slides of mine, I mentioned wind turbine noise is a direct or indirect cause of various problems, including sleep disturbance. Particularly sleep disturbance. Sleep would be the direct cause, and other effects that follow the prolonged lack of sleep are the indirect causes. So if you go for a long time without sleep, obviously some of you might have experienced this in your lifetime or recently, you might develop other problems. I went through a litany of these problems last night. I don't know if you can hear. As I've said, both the National Institutes of Health in the U.S. and the World Health Organization believe that sleep disturbance results in a wide array of other disorders. Even if sleep were the only issue, this is really important, it is enough to be taken extremely seriously. If there's no other problems mentioned, sleep disturbance is a big problem, a big issue. Much is apparently being made of peer-reviewed articles in this case. Many of the articles I offered in my presentation as evidence are what would be considered peer-reviewed and some are not. It's interesting that many of the materials submitted as evidence or as exhibits by Pleasant Ridge are not peer-reviewed, yet the board is being asked to consider those articles as factual evidence. I would just ask part of the citizens who are objecting to this wind project being held to a higher standard. I wanted to take a minute, a couple of minutes, to describe the peer-review process as I see it. I'd like to offer my view based on my being a longtime submitter of articles to such journals and also as a reviewer for many peer-reviewed journals over the years. I reviewed my last peer-reviewed article about two or three months ago. Peer review is the highest-known standard for publication in the scientific and professional world, but it is not infallible. Some peer-reviewed journals are simply of lower quality than others. I mentioned last evening, Crichton, one or more, actually two of the Crichton articles. Even though they're peer-reviewed, I think need a very low standard for quality. I don't know how many people reviewed those articles, but there were, I think, a lot of problems with those studies of the placebo effect. A second point about peer review is that more and more journals are today going online to save cost and speed in the publication process and to enhance speed in the process of publication. Many print journals are going online. I paid for a number of journals myself, and now some of those journals that were available in print are no longer available in print, except for maybe some extra money. Some of them don't even offer that option. So everything these days, as many of you know, is going online essentially. Some of the material is available to the public now, as opposed to only going to pay journalist subscribers. That information hopefully will maintain its high level of peer review. Then there are some online journals that are going what's called open source, making it easier to publish at a faster rate, which seems also to be rushing the peer-review process, getting people to review articles as fast as possible, to get them online as soon as possible. I think that the peer-review process is being jeopardized by that particular process. Another point is that some highly regarded journals, some that have the major, the most impact in the scientific world, actually only use one reviewer. I recall in the Journal of the Acoustical Society of America, in which many acousticians and some audiologists published papers, only one reviewer reviewed that paper. It's true that if one reviewer flags problems, indicates there are problems with an article, then the process usually involves appointing one or possibly another two reviewers. But that journal above all, I think, is an excellent example of a fantastic peer-reviewed journal. So the number of people who review is not necessarily indicative of reputation of the journal. Essentially, all conference papers are, and this is my last point, are peer-reviewed by a committee, typically consisting of two to four experts, at least in my field, who are in the specialty area of the particular paper. These are from the same pool of experts who review journal manuscripts for publication. Although some conference papers that report only preliminary data are more likely to be accepted than journal articles, I would consider such papers as peer-reviewed. And many of the papers I listed in my reference list, or some, at least a significant number, are conference papers. With this, I end my presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Punch. All right, with that, it's the CBA's opportunity to, what was it, any questions we may have, or we can certainly reserve that opportunity until everybody else gets to have anything at this time.
Dr. Punch, June Huesman. I just want to clarify, you are not a medical doctor.
That's right, I'm not a medical doctor.
And your training to be an audiologist or PhD in audiology, did you have to learn the inner workings of the ear?
Yes, anatomy, physiology, and hearing are one of the major components of my training. I actually taught a course, taught a course in anatomy and physiology for these four or five years, past 10 years.
And in your, did you have like a clinic at Michigan State that you'd see patients?
We actually had a clinic when I came there over 20 years ago, and we had it for about 10 to 12 or 15 years. And the campus shut down. All clinics on campus that were not self-supporting, since we were training students, were not really self-supporting, so our clinic was closed at that point. I worked in the clinic primarily by supervising training and training students to learn to be audiologists up until that time.
Did you take patients that, you know, I don't want to say off the street, but outside, from outside the university?
Yes, yes, they did come from around the local area of Lansing, Michigan.
And you treated them for all types of hearing problems?
Hearing impairments, hearing lesions was a big component of ours for many of the patients.
Okay. Your list of references, is it your testimony that the majority of these are peer-reviewed articles, or what's your percentage?
I think I, I'm sorry, I think I used the term majority. I don't know if I actually counted them. I've looked at them many times. I don't know if I counted the final list. The ones, I can tell you this, the ones that don't list a URL, an internet address, are peer-reviewed for sure. The conference papers, as I tried to mention tonight, I consider peer-reviewed because they in fact get peer-reviewed. I think all of those papers are either published or presented at conferences by reputable people who have many peer-reviewed publications.
And in the peer-review process, that's a fact, checking, all sources checked?
I'm sorry, I don't understand that question.
Just trying to clarify that peer review means that the facts in the article are recorded or checked for accuracy?
I think not in a checkbox line-by-line fashion, but certainly they're reviewed by own papers and articles by people who know the material and they would see and flag any problems where there was a substantive error.
So your conclusions in your presentation and your information provided is here tonight, based largely on peer-reviewed articles?
I think you have, I think you have a reference. I had it, but it's not very practical for me to sit here and count it right now, but if you counted the number of papers that don't include the URL, internet address, and count the number of conference presentations, I believe that's what I call them all, those are the number of peer-reviewed articles that are defined peer-reviewed. The others are essentially reports. Some of those are articles used as exhibits, I think, in this case, in this, by Pleasant Ridge. And some are reports of panels that were coined by wind advocates in various places, in various states.
But your conclusions in your presentation are based on your own review of the articles listed or the factors listed in your references?
That's right. Actually, I might have made some statements that, which I, which I did not include references. I have reviewed, if you could tell me how many articles are on that sheet, I could answer this question better. But let's say there's 50. I've reviewed some 150 to 175 articles in the last two years. I keep learning new things every day, okay? So, does that answer the question?
That answers it, thank you. In the Michigan wind project that you visited, would you summarize the number of complaints based on the size of that wind project? Were there widespread complaints? Were they limited?
I think you referred to Huron County, which, case, which was my first experience. I gave that example to indicate last night that I really didn't know anything about wind turbine noise at that point. Honestly, that was about 2009. And the family who called us to their home ultimately had a lawsuit. And since that time, it's been settled, I understand. They're still trying to get out of the house, but haven't been able to sell it, is my understanding.
But that was one family?
That was one family. We formally, as I said, interviewed them. We sat down in the living room, talked to them, and then there were two teenage girls, I believe, about their general. I mainly was listening at that point, just trying to gather facts and see whether I might be interested in pursuing, you know, gathering any more information about it. I didn't touch it last night, but we also interviewed, we talked, we basically just talked to two or three other families. I can't say that the problems were that widespread. I really was admittedly fairly naive about what questions I should be asking at that point. So, we did talk to a number of families, and as I recall, the kinds of complaints they had were very much along the lines of those kinds of cases we talked about last night in the presentation. Not all of those things necessarily. It was kind of a mystery to them as to why they were feeling the way they were, but they knew, one, they didn't have these problems before the wind turbines came in, and two, when they left the area, they felt a lot better.
I was just trying to ascertain if the complaints came from residences that were within X feet of the turbine, or what were some of the factors surrounding, I guess, what were the circumstances?
Well, the turbines near the families that we interviewed were all within probably 1,500 feet. At least one or two turbines within that range. The one I showed last night in the slide was 1,350 feet from the back of the house I lived in.
Do you recall how large that wind farm was?
All those were, I believe, GE, I may have the name. I believe they were GE, I'm pretty sure, I know they were 1.5 megawatt turbines.
I've got the number of turbines in the room.
Forty-six. Sixty-nine megawatt total capacity.
With your background in hearing and sound, do you have any other suggestions for mitigation of, if someone's having, experiencing difficulties with what they think of sounds coming from a wind turbine, or do you have any ideas on how to mitigate or reduce some of those effects?
Well, I believe I could talk more sensibly about what does not work to mitigate. It's very hard to mitigate infrasound. The lower the sound frequency, the further, the wider an area that infrasound is going to travel. I have read, and I unfortunately can't quote a source, that the very lowest frequencies, 110 hertz, would require one-fourth of the wavelength, let's say the 1-hertz tone of 1-hertz sound would take a concrete wall of about 30 feet. Now, that's what I heard. I didn't include any of that kind of information here. I say that with the understanding and knowledge that some of these people, the people we met in Huron County, in fact, were living in their basements and were trying to sleep in their basements, actually, and could not see much effect. And the case that I presented also later on in that presentation last night was the family also from Michigan, who filed a lawsuit later in a different county, a different project, had put mattresses in their basement. I forget one other change that they had made, but they were not able to sleep, they were not satisfied with the kind of rate of improvement. So it's very hard to mitigate the very, very lowest frequency. Now, higher frequencies can be mitigated easier, but I don't think the putting up trees, you know, a lot of big trees might help a little bit with the frequency range of about 20 hertz.
That's what I was looking for. To treat that, or can you turn the turbines in different directions and reduce them?
Well, I can't speak to directionality of the turbines themselves, but I would assume any changes you made in the pitch of the blades is worth it. If you could, what I call feather the blades, or tamp down, as we heard last night, I think, to the sound.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have for now.
All right. The board will retain the opportunity to question you later as we go through other questions, all right? Units of local government, school districts, anybody out there with those, have any questions for Dr. Punch? Steven, all right. Mr. Blazer, do you have any questions for Dr. Punch?
What would you do if I said no?
I thought you did it.
Go ahead, Mr. Blazer.
Dr. Punch, are you here as an audiologist or as an advocate?
I honestly don't know how to answer that because I was asked, my understanding is I was asked by Phil Luthen Ross to represent his clients, who are United Citizens Group of Livingston County. It turns out that the material I have and what I believe seems to be that I'm an advocate, but I'm only an advocate in the sense that I come from a training background that includes the ear, sound, and hearing, and so on, and that that seems relevant here in the sense that the ear is the channel through which sound travels, obviously, to the brain.
Next question. You have your presentation, I understand, on your computer there?
I can pull it up right away, yes.
Okay, slide three.
Okay.
Here you indicated that you've been a witness as a health expert in, sorry, in legal cases in Ohio, Wisconsin, Michigan, Iowa, Illinois, and Oregon, is that correct?
That's correct.
And were all those wind proceedings?
Yes, two at the state level and the other four at the individual or group level.
And in all those cases, who were you testifying for?
In Ohio, the Ohio Power Siding Board. In Wisconsin, the Public Service Commission.
So when you testified, I'm sorry, in Wisconsin, was that the Highland wind proceeding?
It was not any of those proceedings like Shirley Wind or Highland. It was a state hearing at the service commission level. To set targets.
Well, when you say legal cases, which is what you said on slide three, I'm asking where you testified in legal proceedings, not in, not in...
Oh, okay. I didn't, I didn't really understand the difference.
All right, yes. So in Wisconsin, you testified in the Highland wind proceeding, correct?
Oh, yes, yes, okay.
And who was that for?
It was a citizens group.
Opposing that project, correct?
Opposing, yeah, that development.
Okay. And which legal cases have you testified in in Illinois?
Oh, only this one. I listed it, and I said, I thought I said last night, including this case. This is the only one in my system.
Okay. And the one in Michigan was also on behalf of opponents to a wind project, correct?
A family, yes.
Now, I'd like to try and put some of this before we go too far in some historical context.
Sure.
Could you pull up your slide 27? And you had talked about this last night as well. I want to ask you about the Taylor study. And you said, in discussing yesterday the Taylor study, that his study did not use wind turbines on an industrial scale size like the ones we're dealing here with. They were smaller turbines, correct?
They were.
And I believe you said, correct me if I'm wrong, nobody's ever said, that I know of, that noise from a small-scale wind turbine is rough transcript, that's below, well below, sometimes one-megawatt capacity causes any problems at all. Do you remember that?
I remember saying that, yes.
All right. Now, we know that utility scale, or as you refer to them, and opposition groups refer to them, that industrial wind turbines have been around for a long time, right?
They have, yeah.
Especially in Europe?
That's correct.
They date back to the 1980s?
At least, yes, many decades, several decades.
Right. But they were smaller than they are today?
Most of them are, yes, if not all of them.
And...
That's true. I disagree with you on your reasoning.
And there have also been, historically and even today, what might be called, as opposed to, again, what you refer to as industrial turbines, personal wind turbines, like the kind that, for example, a company might use to power it just for its own power, or even a farmer might use for his own energy needs, correct?
Right.
But those are then are going to be smaller than, and I'll use your word, smaller than the industrial turbines, the kind that we're dealing with here.
I think a 1.15 is hitting that mark.
Correct. Below one, I think, we're at the smaller range, is that a fair statement?
Yeah.
Okay. One thing I'm going to ask you, and I know Mr. Luthen has said this a lot to a lot of witnesses. June is going to get more upset at me than you if we talk over each other, so I'd ask you to please, there'll be a slight pause when I'm done asking, so if you could, otherwise the transcript is very confusing, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. And those smaller, less than one-megawatt turbines are the ones that you say Mr. Taylor addressed in his report, correct?
Yeah, and I don't recall the size, the exact size of the turbines.
But they were the smallest?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any issue with Mr. Taylor's findings besides that?
I would need to go back and look at the methods again. I've read all these studies. I haven't read every word of every study. I've read at least an abstract conclusion section. I've read many of the method sections, enough to understand what went on in the studies. I don't recall any other injections, but that was so big a one that I made a statement that I did.
So according to you, it's because Mr. Taylor's findings don't relate to the types of turbines that we're dealing with here, is that correct?
That's correct, especially with regard to infrasound.
Okay. Slide 13, please. You there? Would it be easier if you had the hard copy?
It would, but I, I can figure it out south, be a little faster. I have it here.
Here.
Okay.
I have the one that your attorney gave me yesterday. Just make sure you give it back. It's my only hard, it's my only marked copy. That might be easier. So if you could go to slide 13 then. Okay?
Still have to through them?
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
There are only 75 of them.
I wish I had 70.
All right. And I want to focus on the, what you say is the pro-health position, the third one.
Right.
And you say sufficient anecdotal and scientific evidence exists to indicate that noise from turbines directly or indirectly causes sleep disturbance and a variety of other AHEs, correct?
Correct.
That's not your medical opinion, is it?
It's my opinion as a researcher, as a scientist.
That wasn't my question, sir. That's not your medical opinion.
No, it's my opinion, all right.
You have held a Michigan audiologist license, have you not?
I have.
That was from May 2007 to December 2009?
Your memories or your facts are better than my memory.
Exhibit 263. Dr. Punch, exhibit 263 I'll represent to you is a printout from the State of Michigan Licensing Authorities, and it reflects that your audiologist license lapsed in 2009, correct?
It did.
And that is accurate?
I would assume that's correct.
You're certainly not...
I thought it was a little more recent than that, but it's apparently not.
You're certainly not a licensed audiologist today, correct?
I am not a licensed audiologist.
And you're aware of what services audiologists can and can legally provide, correct? And you're aware of what services audiologists can and can legally provide, correct?
Yes.
All right. Exhibit 264.
I would like a chance to respond if I may further.
When there's a question, I think you should care.
I would ask, witness being given the chance to expand at this point, he's an expert witness. If he wants to expand, I think he has that interest, correct?
I don't have a question, I think.
He wants to respond to one you already had.
Doesn't sound that way to me.
Mr. Punch, just, let's let Mr. Blazer ask the question, another question. And if we can, if you can work in what you need to, that would be fine at that point.
Okay. Uh, I've handed you two documents there, Dr. Punch. Uh, they're both sections from the Michigan statutes dealing with the licensure and authority of audiologists. You recognize those, don't you?
Yes.
All right. So exhibit 2, uh, 264 is section 333.16801 of the Michigan Compiled laws. And you are aware, you have, that the practice of audiology means the non-medical and non-surgical application of principles, methods, and procedures related to disorders of hearing, correct?
Of course.
All right. Uh, could you turn to your slide number 54? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I think it's going to be easier if you do the hard copy. You can take the clip off if you want.
You might, you might get them disconnected.
We don't want to do that.
Slide 54?
Page, uh, slide 54, correct?
Yes.
All right. Question number six, you say, what basis, if any, is there for medically diagnosing adverse health effects from exposure to wind turbines, right?
Yes.
And you're certainly not making any medical diagnosis, are you?
Not myself, no.
Good. Uh, you know that it would be illegal for you to do that?
Of course.
Um, back to, and in fact, back to our exhibit 264, under subsection two, uh, the practice of audiology does not include the practice of medicine or medical diagnosis, correct?
That's B under, in exhibit 264?
264, it's, uh, subparagraph two.
I got you.
Okay. You see that?
Yes.
Practice of audiology does not include the practice of medicine or medical diagnosis, correct?
Correct.
All right. Now, if you could look at number 260, exhibit 265, and that's 333.16803, subparagraph one. Even if you're doing the things that you are authorized to do as an audiologist legally, you can only do them if you are in fact licensed, isn't that right?
Well, I need to respond more fully, but that's correct.
All right. Uh, looking now at subparagraph two of our exhibit 265, uh, you are aware, you have, that under Michigan law, you can't even call yourself an audiologist. Are we in Michigan? Objection. Are we in Michigan? Is hearing in Michigan, I mean, what's the role of it? He practices in Michigan. He works in Michigan. He is a professor of American...
Well, I'm not talking about the law. I'm talking about the law that he functions under because that's where he works, lives, and has taught.
Is this opinion being given under Illinois law or Michigan? Is that a question or an objection?
Okay. All right. We can all agree we're not in Michigan.
Thank you.
All right. But we need to, we need to decide how we're going to handle this. We, all right. At, at this point, you have something to add, and I believe it may be valuable to the rest of this discussion. So I'm going to allow you to add whatever that is within scope here to talk about licensure or whatever it may be, and, and maybe that'll help to clarify some things.
Okay. May I?
You may.
Thank you. Um, there is a Michigan licensure that defines audiologists. There's also American Speech and Language Hearing Association certification process, which also defines audiologists. The two have been at war really for years, okay? My, some of my comments here relate to the lady's question earlier, um, about practicing audiology and my role and so forth. Uh, I'm currently retired, but, oh, the, the point I'm making here is that the clinics were shut down. At that point, I did not want to pay $300, which was the only requirement for containing my licensure, and I was not going to be able to pay it for nothing because I couldn't practice, I wasn't going to practice audiology at that point because the Michigan licensure only allow, is only there, really, I was on the board of the Michigan Speech and Hearing Association when that thing came into being. It only allows, it only is necessary to have a license to be able to put ear mold impression material in an ear because the hearing instrument specialist didn't want that superseding or, um, that practice occurring by people who, who weren't forced to pay the state money to do so because they had to do so. That's my understanding. Um, I called the Michigan licensure board. I called ASHA, the American Speech and Language Hearing Association, when I stopped paying my licensure fee to ask them if I don't practice audiology, if I don't fit hearing aids, am I still an audiologist? And I am, certainly under the ASHA rules. ASHA's been around a lot longer than the Michigan licensure. Uh, now that I'm retired, I'm not practicing, I'm not pretending, I'm not, I'm not proposing that I practice audiology. I'm not here to practice clinical audiology tonight. I'm here to testify to issues relating to the ear and sound, which I, I still understand fairly well. So that would be my answer to this. Thanks for letting me talk.
Let me just, let me just add a question. You spoke of another governing body.
Yes.
Are you, are you current with them, the American Speech Language?
Thank you for asking. Yes, I forgot to mention that I am current. I just finished my, my last 30 hours of, uh, most of it was online. I guess all of it's online, but it's, it's the way it's, it's done, uh, Canada. Um, and I'm current through 16, 18, 2018.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Blazer, you may continue.
Thank you. Um, to address your attorney's concern, you're not licensed in Illinois either, correct?
No, I'm not.
And are you aware that under the provisions of the Illinois Speech, Language, Mythology, and Audiology Practice Act, an audiologist means a person who has received a license pursuant to that act and engages in the practice of audiology?
I was not aware of that. I'm not surprised by that, actually.
And are you aware that under that act, the practice of audiology is the applicant, is the application of non-medical methods and procedures?
I'm aware of that definition generally. I am not held for practicing audiology in the state of Illinois.
Yeah, there is a provision in the Michigan statutes that applies to, for example, audiologists who works with, who work with educational institutions, correct?
Sounds right, yes.
All right. Exhibit 266. Exhibit 26, 266 is section 333.16807 of the same Michigan licensing statute. And it says, if you look at subsection A, this part does not, does not limit any of the following: An individual employed by a regionally accredited college or university, and I assume MSU is regionally accredited, correct?
Correct.
Uh, and involved with research or the teaching of communication disorders, and that's you, right?
Oh, up until the time I retired, yes.
From performing those duties for which he or she is employed by that institution as long as that individual does not engage in the practice of audiology or hold himself or herself out as licensed or otherwise authorized under this article as an audiologist. Did I read that correctly?
You read it correctly.
All right. Let's talk about ASHA. Uh, and that's the American Speech, Language, Hearing Association, right?
Right.
ASHA has a code of ethics, don't they?
Correct.
You familiar with its provisions or...?
Uh, yes, I've read them many times.
Sorry. 268.
Yes.
All right. Uh, principle of ethics one, rules of ethics, page two, subparagraph O. Tell me if I'm reading this correctly.
I'm sorry, can you say that again, please?
Principle of ethics one, rules of ethics on page two, subparagraph O.
Oh, okay.
All right. Individuals shall not charge for services not rendered, nor shall they misrepresent services rendered, products dispensed, or research and scholarly activities conducted. You familiar with that one?
Uh, yes.
All right. Page three, rules of ethics, subparagraph A, individuals shall not misrepresent their credentials, competence, education, training, experience, or scholarly or research contributions. You familiar with that one?
Yes, I'm familiar with all this.
Subparagraph D, individuals shall not misrepresent research, et cetera. Are you familiar with that one?
Yes.
Subparagraph F.
I'm sorry, X.
F, F is a frank. Individuals' statements to the public shall provide accurate information about the nature and management of communication disorders, about the professions, about professional services, about products for sale, and about research and scholarly activities. You familiar with that one?
Yes.
All right. Uh, subparagraph G, individual statements to the public when advertising, announcing, and marketing their professional services, reporting research results, and promoting products shall adhere to professional standards and shall not contain misrepresentation. Did I read that correctly?
Correct.
Yes. All right. Um, let's go to slide three. And you say here that you chaired Wind and Health Technical Work Group, Michigan Department of Energy.
Yes.
Now, this one kind of jumped out at me, I'll be honest with you. It seems a little bit different from some of your other references. What is this involvement?
I was asked to chair this work group, uh, to, uh, chair this committee that was charged with the mission of coming up with a revision of the Michigan State Guidelines for citing them onshore wind turbines.
And the, the state of Michigan has statewide guidelines for the citing.
It had at the time, yes.
Uh, so in that situation, you weren't hired by a wind opposition, correct?
No, no, no.
Right. This was for the Michigan State Government or some arm of the Michigan State Government? Excuse me?
Yes.
It's going to happen a lot. Um, did you generate a report as a result of that effort?
Well, the committee did. The work, the work group did. We generated, we didn't generate, if you want to know the full story, I mean, I can tell you that, but we didn't generate a formal final report, but we generated about 10 draft reports that were almost finalized.
There, there was some sort of a document, a, a tail end document that you generated?
Yes.
And do you have a list of presentation references? I can't recall which exhibit number it is. UCLCS?
I have it somewhere here, yes.
Might be easier for you on that one on the computer because what I'm, what I really would like you to do is, I couldn't find that on your list of references. I was wondering if you could point it out to me.
I don't know that I included it. You're talking about, let's see. No, it would have had the name Punch and Rosenman. We published a minority report. We didn't publish it, I'm sorry. We posted it through the university on the internet.
Okay.
Uh, may I say, I didn't include it because I didn't consider it research.
My handkerchief was with Marcus, Pleasant Bridge, 269. I think we can assume that's the one you posted on the web since candidly, I'll tell you that's where I found it.
Uh, I didn't post it, so I'm...
All right. Well, it does, if you look at the, uh, the title of this, it's Recommended Update of Sample Zoning for Wind Energy Systems, correct?
Correct.
All right. Uh, and then if you look at the introduction, it identifies the individuals responsible for the update. You see that?
Yes, the third paragraph.
All right. And it's William McMillan, Jerry Punch, Professor of Audiology, Department of Communicative Communicative Sciences and Disorders, Michigan State University. That's you.
Right.
There isn't another one of those Jerry Punches in Michigan, correct?
Not that I know of.
Okay. Um, could you take a look at page two, limitations on noise? Is you referring to?
Yes.
All right. Um, and the committee that you chaired says here, we recommend that municipalities base their decisions about noise limitations on the best available peer-reviewed scientific evidence. First of all, what's the date of that document?
It seems to be dated, uh, June 28, 2011. I don't know what version this is. It might be the final one, might not be.
Okay. Um, going back to what I was reading, as of June 28, 2011, there is sufficient evidence to support link between audible sound produced by wind turbines and both sleep disturbance and annoyance. Uh, regarding infrasound, however, we believe that a causal link between infrasound and adverse health impacts is not established despite numerous anecdotal accounts and a growing literature showing the biological plausibility of such a link. It is also important to recognize that there is no published peer-reviewed literature showing the absence of a link. This issue should be periodically revisited by interdisciplinary experts as future peer-reviewed evidence becomes available. Uh, did I read that correctly?
You did.
All right. Could you, uh, back to your slide three, um, yeah, I'll just read to you, I don't have to dig for it. It, under your recent professional experience, you list ongoing literature review.
Yes.
All right. Uh, and I think you, you said when you, in your opening comments today, that that's something you do. You, you, over the last two years, you write a bunch of articles, and you continue to keep yourself abreast of materials that become available in the context of wind projects and your interest in wind projects, correct?
Correct.
All right. Um, let's go to your slide 16. And this one, this is the one entitled Noise Annoyance of Health Opposing Views.
Yes.
Uh, and you, you talk about the, what the wind industry, you say, conceives, uh, but states that annoyance is not a pathological entity, i.e. annoyance and health are different entities. Did you see that?
Concedes wind turbines is annoying.
Right, okay. Do you consider materials generated by the wind industry on these issues to be inherently biased?
It's a very difficult question.
That's why I asked it.
Yes. I, I think most times when panels are appointed, they're pointing, they're pointing, appointing selected people who are known to be advocates for the wind industry, and in no case that I recall is any state in which those panels have been appointed by the wind industry, including one like myself or any other person who does not advocate for the wind industry in that same sense.
So is your answer to the question yes?
I think it's yes.
Okay. Uh, go to slide 13. Preliminary thoughts, perspectives slash biases. And this is the one, we, we touched on very briefly a few minutes ago, is the one where you get the pro and the anti and the pro help.
Right.
So you're, you're really, the first two, you're talking about both sides of the spectrum. There's the pro wind and there's the anti wind. And both sides have their biases, right?
Right.
Okay. And that's the point you're trying to make on this slide, right?
Yeah, I'm trying to make the major, major point that there's another view. I think some folks in other counties in, in Illinois call it pro responsibility.
All right. Well... Well, talking about the, the pro wind groups and the anti wind groups, following up on your answer that, uh, studies generated by the pro wind groups appear to have inherent bias. Would you also agree that materials generated by members of the opposing groups, the ones you identify in your slide thirteen, would also reflect some inherent bias?
Some bias, yes.
Okay. So here's what I'd like to do, if you'll bear with me. I'm going to try and go through some materials with you that have come out since your, since that report, two sixty-nine, for the state of Michigan. But I'm going to try and separate out materials. I'm going to try and get to your third option, the pro health option.
Okay.
So I'm going to try and separate out materials generated by authors who, under your criteria, may have a bias. And just focus on those that appear to be wholly independent. Like, for example, what you did for the state of Michigan. Does that sound fair?
If you wish, yes.
Okay. So I'm going to exclude out anything that's been published, for example, by the American Wind Energy Association or the Canadian Wind Energy Association. Those are clearly pro wind groups, right?
Right.
Okay. I also want to exclude out things that are published by persons or entities that are tied to anti wind groups, like National Wind Watch or Illinois Wind Watch. Does that sound fair?
I think it's fair, judging from where I believe you sit, yes.
Okay. And you do know that those others are anti wind groups, right?
I do.
Okay.
Yes, I'm making sure I don't belong to any of them.
Two eighty-two. Two eighty-two, Tom. What I've showed you here, uh, is, uh, a list of wind opposition groups from the National Wind Watch website. You're, you're certainly familiar with a few of those groups, aren't you?
At least some of them, yes. I wasn't aware there were so many, actually.
Okay. The production tax. Two eighty-two. One other realization. Uh, you're familiar with something called the Society for Wind Vigilance?
I am, I think it's about fifteen members.
Okay. You're not a member of the, or?
A nine.
Okay. That's not a pro wind group, is it?
I would say nine.
Okay. Two seventy-three. Two seventy-three, Tom. I'll represent to you, sir, that two seventy-three is a printout from this, the website of the Society for Wind Vigilance. And in going through that, uh, it looked very similar to some of the material that you presented here last night. Uh, for example, a graph on the first page.
Okay.
Would you, would you, I mean, that's the same graph you presented, right?
Yeah, it's from a period of your term.
Okay. So the material that you presented yesterday, did you get them from the, uh, Society for Wind Vigilance site?
No, absolutely not. I don't go there.
Okay. Two seventy. Two seventy-four, Dr. Punch, is a list of the, the directors and the advisors that are affiliated with the Society for Wind Vigilance, correct?
It's a list, I don't know if it's correct or not, but.
But it's off their website.
It's off their, okay.
That, that's actually not my question. My question is, do you see any names on there that you recognize?
I do, sure.
Could you identify which ones that you are personally familiar with?
With them personally, as professionals or people?
Sure.
Or with their articles or?
Well, for example.
I don't know everybody personally by any means, by their name. I know very few of them, if any personally.
For example, Rick James is on there.
I don't know Rick James personally.
Right.
Yes.
There's, there's a Dr. Missenbaum on there? Do you know him personally?
Yes, Michael Missenbaum. I've talked to him once on the phone.
Okay.
Don't remember personally, I've never been.
I think there's a Dr. Shepherd listed on there. Do you know him personally?
No. I have quoted him, though. He does do research.
Yes, you have.
Valid research.
I'm sorry. Which one, where did you find it? Did you find it?
Yes.
All right, let's go back to your presentation. You refer to just a couple of our exhibits in your presentation. We'll get to those shortly. Could you describe generally the extent of your review of this record that you conducted?
Records meaning my review of what you're doing?
No, no, of this proceeding. What did you review from this presentation?
Oh, okay, so essentially. Uh, yeah, I, I reviewed some parts of the application just to get a general view of what was going on, what was being asked. Uh, after which I reviewed the, what I'll call depositions of, uh, whether depositions, I'm not sure what that.
You mean the testimony?
Testimony, yeah. Of Doctors Roberts and Doctor, uh, Doctors Roberts and Ellen Bogan.
Okay.
I believe that was it.
Did you review all of the materials that were put into the record by Dr. Roberts?
Uh, no, I reviewed his presentation and a sample of some of the exhibits, I believe.
All right, let's go back to, to slide sixteen of your presentation. And this is the one we looked at before, where you say, "The wind industry conceives that wind turbine noise is annoying, including its fluctuating nature, but states that annoyance is not a pathological entity." That, that's like, you know, our preferred category.
I have it, yes.
You do know that it's not just the wind industry that takes that medical position, correct?
Yes, I do. There are others who say, say the same thing.
All right. Now, yesterday you said that you rely for most of your opinions on peer-reviewed literature and other sources, including government reports, correct?
I think I said that, yes.
Okay. So what I'm going to ask you, I'm going to hand you these, I'll go through them. These are not new exhibits, these are early. So I'm going to ask you for each one of these, if you think any of these are part of the wind industry or otherwise biased. Well, one at a time. I'll identify them and you'll take a look and you tell me if.
Sure.
That's the question I want to ask you. Pleasant Ridge exhibit sixty-seven, issued by the Springfield-Singham County Regional Planning Commission in 2012. Is that it?
Sixty-seven?
Fifty-seven. That was right outside one time. Fifty-seven, they're in order. Uh, is, is that entity part of the wind industry?
I'm looking for an author, and I don't see one. I'm sorry to tell where it's from.
The author, well, it's from right in the front, the Springfield-Singham County Regional Planning Commission.
Okay.
Uh, is that part of the wind industry?
Not from the wind industry, if you define it as a real, uh, I don't think.
Is the Springfield-Singham County Regional Planning Commission a wind entity of any kind?
Rescue me, I don't.
You don't know? So you don't know if that agency is inherently biased in favor of the wind?
No, I don't know.
Okay. Let's look at number fifty-eight. That's a 2012 report issued by the State of Maine Department of Health and Human Services. Is that entity part of the wind industry?
From the Department of Health and Human Services and, uh, it's like Maine, yes. I would view these, this report and some others like it as.
Please, you know, this is going to go a lot faster if you just answer my question. My question is.
Do I view it, yes or no, as part of the wind industry?
Is, is the Maine Department of Health and Human Services part of the wind industry?
I would think there's a connection.
Why would you think there's a connection between a state department of?
Oh, no, okay, you're right, you're right. Okay. No, I don't see a connection.
All right. And so is it your opinion, if you know, is a report issued by the State of Maine Department of Health and Human Services inherently biased in favor of the wind industry?
In this report, you're saying? I don't think it's, I don't think it's inherently biased in terms of the wind industry.
So you don't? Let's look at the next one, exhibit fifty-nine. And that was a report issued in 2012 on behalf of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection and the Massachusetts Department of Health. Are those two state agencies part of the wind industry?
No, but you're connecting this to a statement I made to examples.
I'm not connecting it to anything, sir. I'm just asking you a question. Finish your answer, please. I think he's in the middle of his answer and he's just got cut off.
Mr. Bonch, why?
Sure, sure, answer. I was looking at two diametrically opposed positions without putting any of these in any particular place.
Okay. My questions are putting them in that particular.
Okay, okay.
So I'll ask it again. Are the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection or the Massachusetts Department of Health part of the wind industry?
Not, uh, government-related in time, I'm saying.
And is a report issued by those agencies inherently biased in favor of the wind industry?
I, I don't know some of these other people. Dr. Ellen Bogan certainly has testified on behalf of the wind industry many times in many places.
Dr. Ellen Bogan has testified on behalf of the wind industry many times in many places?
I think he has.
Really? What do you base that on?
Um, well, okay.
What do you base that on?
It's my understanding that he has, uh, I know he participated in this one.
You said many times and many places. What do you base that on?
I don't have, okay, I don't, I don't know what states. I understood he was testifying in a number of states. I took.
Who told you that? Can he finish before we?
I don't know.
Come on, but ask another question. You know what, she's got, go answer.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Blazer, just ask, wait for him to finish.
We do need to let him finish. But remember, um, you, you need to answer the questions that Mr. Blazer poses without extrapolating into other things that potentially lead down to, to questions that never end.
I don't have any definite, uh, factual information. My impression was based on information from sources I don't recall, but it's not worthy of discussion here, I think, in terms of.
Well, I think it's very worthy of discussion. So let me try it this way. Is that a question? Let me try it this way. Do you have any information to suggest, imply, or confirm that Dr. Ellen Bogan has ever, in his entire career, testified in any proceeding other than his testimony in this proceeding?
No, I don't.
So you were speculating?
I guess. I understood he had, I even took a course under him to see what he was saying about sleep. Because I thought that.
Let's look at the next one. You thought, you took a course under him because you thought what?
I took an online course because I knew he was testifying here and I thought in another place or more, uh, in, on behalf of the wind industry about sleep. And I was interested in seeing what he said about sleep. He taught a course to audiologists.
So you tried to check him out?
I, I was impressed with him, okay?
He's an impressive guy, isn't he?
He is an impressive guy.
All right. Let's go to the next one. Pleasant Ridge exhibit sixty. Is the Public Health Division of the Oregon Health Authority associated with the wind industry?
Not that I know of.
And would a report issued by that agency be inherently biased in favor of the wind industry?
I didn't say it was, no.
That's not my question.
No, I don't, guess it is.
All right. Pleasant Ridge exhibit sixty-one. That's a report by the University of Salford, S-A-L-F-O-R-D, prepared for the Scottish government. Is the Scottish government part of the wind industry?
I'm sure there are ties between the two, but as far as I know, I would think the government has regulatory say in the wind industry in what it does. I'm just assuming, again, I don't know. Not that I know of, okay?
I assume your basis for assuming that connection is the same basis you had for assuming that Dr. Ellen Bogan has testified.
No, it's the same basis if we're assuming that the wind industry and governmental ties are pretty strong in terms of production tax credits, et cetera.
And are there production tax credits in Scotland?
I don't think so.
All right.
Okay, you guys, this is a perfect opportunity to take ten minutes. I've got seven forty-five. In the middle of some questions, we'll let you go ahead and continue along.
You've got a couple more up there. I'll, I'll make it quick on those two. You've got Pleasant Ridge exhibit sixty-two, which is documented from the Australian Medical Association. And then sixty-four is the Wisconsin Wind Site Council. See those two?
Yes, and there's sixty-three here, too.
Oh, Health Canada. Hang on a minute, you're talking about Health Canada? Actually, sixty-two, sixty-three, and sixty-four, those three entities, those are not entities associated with the wind industry, correct?
Not in a direct way that I know of, no.
Okay. You have, uh, you have exhibit sixty-four there, the one from the Wisconsin Wind Site Council.
I do.
That was dated October thirty-one, two thousand fourteen. Uh, if you could turn to page three. And then there's a couple of bullet points I want to ask you a question about. The first one is, there are substantial individual differences in how people report their perception of wind energy systems. And a negative perception affects whether an individual reports adverse health effects that they attribute to wind energy systems. And the next one says, "A majority of individuals living near utility-scale wind systems do not report stress, sleep deprivation, or chronic adverse health effects attributed to wind turbines." On that latter bullet point, I believe you testified yesterday that you agree with that, that the majority of people do not submit complaints, correct?
I think that's true. They do not submit or complain.
Okay. Could you go to, uh, page fifty, the first paragraph of that same, uh, Wisconsin Wind Site Council document?
Okay.
Is the paragraph that starts as noted previously?
Yes.
It says, "As noted previously, in no instance in the council literature survey did an article make the claim that wind turbines have no effect on individuals living near them. Rather, the view of those authors in the relatively pro-wind category is that they can cause annoyance, may cause sleep disturbance, and may cause self-stress due to environmental noise and a loss of control over the environment. Although these effects may be viewed by some as adverse, adverse health effects, another group of articles concludes that there is not a direct link between wind turbines and negative effects in human health, and that wind turbines do not elicit more complaints of adverse health effects than other types of novel environmental noise." So far, it looks like they're saying roughly what you've said, correct?
Pretty consistent, yes.
All right. Furthermore, these articles indicate that the primary predictor of whether an individual will report adverse health effects subsequent to wind energy. will report adverse health effects subsequent to wind energy facility coming online is the individual's perceptions of wind turbines. In other words, these authors argue that an individual's disposition, positive or negative, towards wind turbines is a powerful predictor of whether they will report adverse health effects, and that's one of those conclusions that you disagree with, correct?
Yes, I do.
All right. But isn't that consistent with the report?
Can I correct that response? I don't disagree that that was what they said, I disagree with the authors.
Now, I did it to you, I apologize.
Okay. I don't believe overall that, based on at least the four studies I talked about last night in the slide presentation, that personality effects account alone for negative attitudes toward wind turbines. I'm sorry, not negative, account for adverse health effects, reports of adverse health effects.
Well, let's talk about annoyance, which is one of the things we're talking about. In the context of annoyance, isn't that conclusion similar to the conclusion that your chair in Michigan gave to?
You're giving me a report in 2011, lots happened since then.
Well, let's look at that report in 2011. Let's go back to exhibit 269.
So this is back, right?
It's one of the ones I gave you.
Oh, I have it.
Okay, page 4. It's the paragraph that starts conclusions that could be derived. You see it?
Yes.
And the committee that you chaired in June of 2011 said, "Conclusions that can be derived from these data are that individuals who do not benefit economically from wind turbines are more likely to be annoyed by noise at relatively low levels, and that the level of annoyance increases with increasing noise levels." The latter finding was also supported by Pedersen and Persson, P-E-R-S-S-O-N, WAE, W-A-Y-E, 2004. "Communities that are tolerant of these levels of annoyance may wish to adopt 45 DBA as the maximum allowable noise level, but in our view, non-participating residents are more likely to have complaints about noise levels when an outdoor noise level, excuse me, when outdoor noise levels reach a C45 DBA." Did I read that correctly?
You read it correctly.
All right, yes. Could you go back to exhibit 64, that's the Wisconsin Wind Siting Council report?
And, sorry, I'm a little bit covered up here.
You want to try and find it for us?
It's supposed to be this one.
The Wisconsin Wind Siting Council, it's exhibit 64.
I have it.
All right. Page 60, 16. And the majority conclusion is, "Although important and indeed groundbreaking research is clearly being conducted in the field of wind health interactions, this council is unable at this time to conclude that wind turbines have a direct and negative effect on human health." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Go to your slide 14. Now, exhibit 64, this Wisconsin Wind Siting Council report evidently is one of the documents that we put in evidence that you did review before you came in, is that right?
I reviewed it to some extent.
Okay. And that's because on this slide, you're highlighting a statement from a minority report that's attached to that majority report, correct?
Correct.
All right. Could you turn to appendix E, page 1?
Of the Wisconsin?
Of the Wisconsin report. Appendix appendix, I, E.
What page does it come after?
On the bottom. Run it and dig it for this, Dr. Panch, I'll just read you what it says.
Shh.
This is from the minority report at the beginning, it's appendix E, page 1. And this is what they say about the majority's principal conclusion. "We find that the council has done an excellent job in keeping with these obligations of reviewing the available peer-reviewed research regarding the potential for direct negative health effects of large wind energy systems to residents living near those systems. We further believe that the assessment and overall conclusion of the Wind Siting Council based on that review is sound, namely, the finding that although there are several publications arguing that noise from wind turbines directly causes adverse health effects in humans, based upon the peer-reviewed literature, it appears at this time that there is insufficient data to validate this scientific conclusion." Now, with the understanding that that's what they said, my question is, when you prepared your slides and you put what you did on your slide 14, why didn't you include what I just read?
I didn't actually see it at the time. I've seen the work before, but I was trying to make a simple point that I agree with these two opinions, even though they came from different groups or subgroups of that larger group.
You do know that there are 15 members of the Wisconsin Wind Siting Council, which is...
I didn't know the exact number.
It's at the top of page 5.
Okay.
And going back to the majority report, hopefully you can find it there, but I'll read it to you, I've got the book here, let's make it easy. It's at the bottom of page 15. "The council's survey of review and opinion articles identified more articles that were critical of wind energy systems than in support. Fifteen critical, seven supportive. This does not indicate that the consensus of the scientific community is that wind energy facilities have proven adverse health effects in humans. However, although the reviews and opinion articles that are not critical of wind energy are fewer in number, other factors are also important when evaluating these articles. For instance, many of the critical reviews and opinion articles are published in very low-impact journals, make erroneous claims, and do not follow scientific standards on citing evidence." Do you know if that assessment includes any of your point?
I imagine it did, but I don't know.
Okay.
Although, I'm sorry, Hurkers is not a review, though. It's a book, reporting case studies, so maybe not on that basis.
All right. In several of your slides, and you don't have to just go through them, because I'm going to mention their name in a minute, 17, 18, and 19, you cite the work of a person named, we just mentioned her, WAE, W-A-Y. Is that correct?
That's correct.
She's usually co-authoring articles with Pedersen?
She has served with Rederson.
And that's Kirstin, K-E-R-S-T-I-N, Persson WAE, correct?
Yes, I mistakenly in the Michigan report, mistakenly put Persson WAE as her last name, I think her last name was just WAE.
Correct. Right. Do you consider her an authoritative source, since you cited Persson many times?
Yeah, in terms of what they did, I think it's valid. I think they give the issue of annoyance differently than we do.
All right. Let's go back to, just one last thing from the Wisconsin Wind Siting Council report from October of last year. This is page 16, the last paragraph, I got dumped in, I'll just read it to you, it's easier. "As it stands, literature available to the council lacked strength and in some instances was biased. Many of the authors of the material cited herein point this out and call for more detailed, randomized, long-term studies in the future. The council is aware of at least one study being conducted by a government panel that is designed to do just that, and at least one additional governmental review of the literature. These may shed light on new health issues associated with wind turbines, or confirm the council's finding that there is no direct link between wind turbines and human health. At the very least, ongoing research should clarify the sometimes muddy waters of the wind health debate." Do you have some recollection of having read that?
I've read that several times in many places, certainly.
And the two studies that they refer to, there are footnotes 65 and 66 on that page, are the Government of Canada, Health Canada Statistics Canada Group, and Government of Australia, the National Health and Medical Research Council. Do you remember that?
Not specifically the Medical Research Council, but I must have read it at some point.
You take my word for it that that is footnote 66? Okay. Let's go to Health Canada, which you have up there, it's Pleasant Ridge exhibit 63. And you say on your slide 21, exhibit 63, Canada, Health Canada 2014, quote, WTN, which is, that's wind turbine annoyance, right?
Right.
Okay. "WTN annoyance was found to be statistically related to measured long-term cortisol levels and systolic and diastolic blood pressure." That's on your slide 21, right?
Right.
Okay. And that's what you quoted out of the Health Canada report, right?
Yes, under the title, "Annoyant Stress and AGBs."
Okay. And remember last night when you were talking about this, you characterized this quote that you quoted in your slide as an admission? Do you remember saying that?
I don't, I mean, know what you mean by admission.
I'll read you your testimony, maybe it'll refresh your recollection. Phil, excuse me, Mr. Luke, it's page 1364, starts at line 17. "The Health Canada study admitted, or said, that with wind turbine noise, the abbreviated WTN, annoyance was statistically related to measured long-term cortisol levels and systolic and diastolic blood pressure." So they had some physiologic studies that they reviewed, and they basically are saying that, yeah, annoyance does relate, in fact, to health problems. That's the Health Canada study, which is being purported to be very much pro-wind type of study. Do you remember testifying to that last night?
I pretty much is.
Okay. So, first, since you have the Health Canada study in there, this quote that's in your slide 21, what section of the Health Canada study is that from? You have to go all the way back to page 2 to see where the section starts. It's section B. What does that say?
Self-reported questionnaire results.
And you do know that's not the principal conclusion of the study, don't you?
No, I selected this to make the point that even your own exhibits indicate there is a relationship between physiological measures and...
All right, well, why don't we see what those people said, the line you quoted? It's at the top of page 3.
Are you saying the quote is not in here?
I'm not saying that.
I can't find it at the moment, I'm just asking if you can show me where it is again. I found it earlier, obviously.
Your quote?
Yeah, I don't know where I got it exactly from, I know already. Took the quote from here, but I, here, let me do it to you again, it's a little bit more...
Mr. Panch, just to remind you, if you can speak a little closer in your mic, I know it's struggling a little bit to hear you.
I'm sorry.
No problem. All right. If you see your court reporter leaving Georgia, that's because she's having a hard time hearing you.
For the record, Dr. Panch, it's 5.3, and it's the second quote.
Got you.
Okay. So, that's the one you wanted to quote for the zoning board, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, could you go to the top of page 3 of the report? And here's what Health Canada said about the part that you quoted from the questionnaires.
Is that a question or statement?
No, I'm reading it to him.
Well, I guess I'm going to object to the characterization.
All right. Well, I'm just going to read from the report. The following, first of all, you stop at page 3?
Yes.
Okay. "The following were not found to be associated with WTI exposure. Self-reported sleep, e.g. general disturbance, use of sleep medication, diagnosed sleep disorders. Self-reported illnesses, e.g. general disturbance, use of sleep medication..." Excuse me. I just, we read the same one, didn't we? "...self-reported illnesses, e.g. dizziness, tinnitus, prevalence of frequent migraines and headaches, and chronic health conditions, e.g. heart disease, high blood pressure, and diabetes, and self-reported perceived stress and quality of life. While some individuals reported some of the health conditions above, the prevalence was not found to change in relation to WTN levels." Now, was it your decision to quote a portion of this report that the study rejected, or did somebody ask you to do that?
Nobody asked me to do that.
It's the characterization.
Okay.
Argumentative.
It is true, isn't it, before this study came out, that you had been looking forward to the results, is that right?
I guess, where you heard that?
From your testimony. I'm trying to read it.
No, I don't.
Well...
If I said that in my testimony, I was, don't be incorrect, I don't remember looking forward to it, it came out unexpectedly some weeks ago.
Unexpectedly?
Well, in my world, I knew they were doing this study, okay? I didn't know when it was about to come out, and it came out unannounced, to read it others, I guess, and I was a little surprised, but...
Well, you did know before it came out that the Canadian government had budgeted $1.8 million for the study, right?
Yes.
Okay. And you felt that that was, before the study was published, you felt that that was an indication that the medical community considers the complaints from Ontario and other provinces as credible, and that it wants to gain a better understanding of the problem, right?
I think I said that in some other venue.
Yes, you did.
At a deposition, and yes, so in that sense, I see where you're coming from. I guess I might have said something like I looked forward to it, because it sounded like they were really going to get at what needed to be discovered.
It was just, you know, it was from your testimony in the Highland Wind Project.
Okay, thanks. It's been a while.
Now, let's go back to the one statement you mentioned in your presentation, which is that slide 21 that I've been asking you about. I'd like you actually, in the context of what you quoted, I'd like you to look at the objectively measured results immediately below that, that you didn't mention in your presentation. We're still on page 5. It's under the heading "See objectively measured results." Do you see where I'm at?
Yes.
"Objectively measured health outcomes were found to be consistent and statistically related to corresponding self-reported results. WTN was not observed to be related to hair cortisol concentrations, blood pressure, resting heart rate, or measured sleep, e.g. sleep latency, awakenings, sleep efficiency, following the application of multiple regression models." Then they go through measures associated with stress. Do you see where I am in that subparaphrase?
Yes.
And then down at the bottom of the second paragraph, the paragraph starts, "Cortisol is a well-established biomarker." You see that?
I don't see it.
It's measured.
Yes.
Okay, you got it, all right. The last sentence of that paragraph says, "Therefore, cortisol is particularly useful in evaluating the potential impact that long-term exposure..." in evaluating the potential impact that long-term exposure to WTN has on one of the primary biomarkers linked to stress." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
All right. And then the next paragraph. "The results from multiple linear regression analysis reveal consistency between hair cortisol concentrations and scores on the perceived stress scale, i.e. higher scores on this scale were associated with higher concentrations of hair cortisol, with neither measure found to be significantly affected by exposure to WTN. Similarly, while self-reported high blood pressure, hypertension, was associated with higher measured blood pressures, no statistically significant association was observed between measured blood pressure or resting heart rate and WTN exposure." Did I read that correctly, sir?
You did.
Why didn't you mention that in your presentation?
Because my title of my slide, twenty-one, was Annoyance, Stress and AAGs, and because I said wind turbine noise and annoyance, and their subjectively reporting results were related to cortisol levels, that's all I said.
Okay. Let's look at the second objectively measured result, which is sleep quality, that's number two on page six. And then the report goes through how sleep quality is measured, you see that, we're not going to read all that.
Yes, yes.
Okay. But they explain how they, how they did what they did, right?
Yes.
Okay. And you don't disagree that their methodology was valid, correct?
I don't, no, I can't say here tonight that it's invalid.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I can't say here tonight that it was invalid.
All right. So here's the, Mr. Blazer...
I need the microphone.
Yeah. Maybe if you pull it a little this way, because you're looking at Mr. Blazer, and that's why she's not giving it.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Can you help if I switch sides? I can't tell.
Thanks. This is bad.
All right, fine. No disrespect to the ZB. All right, here's the conclusion. "While it can be seen that many variables had a significant impact on measured sleep, calculated outdoor WTN levels near the participants' home was not found to be associated with sleep efficiency, the rate of awakenings, duration of awakenings, total sleep time, or how long it took to fall asleep." You didn't mention that conclusion in your presentation, did you?
Uh, no, I had seventy-five slides, and I don't know if I would have mentioned that or not, but I was making a specific point.
All right. So, having, assuming that you were looking forward to this study before it came out, do you now consider it a biased study?
Well, it's, I think, based on the conditions they set out to use in terms of the methodology, I don't think they're reporting the results that are consistent with the methodology, at least not completely. And I have to say that based on a very long ago recollection of what the methods were, but it sounded like the methods were very valid, but it seems like this report is very limited relative to all the things they were going to study. I don't know if they ran out of money or...
You don't know anything then?
I don't know any, no.
Do you consider it a biased study?
Let me just say, in answer to that question, it's a government study, you asked me, was I, did I think any of these other studies were biased against the wind industry? I don't have any evidence.
Actually in favor of the wind industry.
I'm sorry. Biased in favor of the wind industries, thank you.
Right.
I don't have any evidence that any single report is biased in that regard. I have experience in Michigan, which indicates there's a very heavy relationship between the government and the wind industry. The government asked us to chair a committee.
Mr. Chairman, could you please direct the witness to answer?
He is answering the question as to bias.
I asked him a question about Canada, not about Michigan.
He's answering the question as to all of the studies, including the Canada study.
Canada's government.
All right, Mr. Blazer, just go ahead and finish your answer to this question, please.
This is the Environmental and Workplace Health Division of Health Canada, which is governmental-related, but that's my understanding, and that's why I included it with these others.
All right. Dr. Blazer, exhibit two seventy is a list of the members with their resumes of the Council of Canadian Academies, expert panel on wind turbine noise and human health, that is the group that generated the Health Canada study. Have you ever seen that list before?
I can't say for sure whether I did or not, see the list of names.
Are there any of those names that you're familiar with?
I think Carrison, Wayne.
That's Kirsten Person Wayne, the person that you cited.
Yes, those two, I think those are the only two, actually, that I remember.
And that's the same way that you've cited several times in your presentation?
Yes, it must be.
Okay. Then, certainly back around, and I'm not going to ask you, the other footnote in the Wisconsin Wind Sighting Council report referred to Government of Australia, National Health and Medical Research Council, also known as the NHMRC. Do you recall that?
I do.
Dr. Blazer, have you seen this report?
I have seen it, yes.
Have you read it before?
Not all of it, I've read some of it, I read, you know, what I needed to know as far as what the main conclusions were, pretty much consistent with many of the other reports by government.
Let's go to the top of page fourteen. Okay. The paragraph that starts, there is no consistent evidence, do you see that?
Oh, yes.
Okay. There is no consistent evidence that noise from wind turbines, whether estimated in models or using distance as a proxy, is associated with self-reported human health effects. Isolated associations may be due to confounding, bias, or chance. There is consistent evidence that noise from wind turbines, whether estimated in models or using distance as a proxy, is associated with annoyance, and reasonable consistency that it is associated with sleep disturbance and poor sleep quality and quality of life. However, it is unclear whether the observed associations are due to wind turbine noise or plausible confounders. Then in parentheses, they say, D rating, do you see that?
I do.
All right, could you go to page eleven, top of the page? Paragraph that starts, summary ratings were provided, do you see it?
Page eleven.
Page eleven, top of the page. Summary ratings were provided on a scale from A to D.
Sorry, I haven't seen that, I'll page you up. Consistency of results.
Okay. Well, you know what, let's make it easy, because I have the quote here, you know. I'll just read it to you. Summary ratings were provided on a scale from A to D, and A rating indicates that there is good support for an association between wind turbine emissions and human health effects, while a D rating indicates poor support, and it refers to box two on page thirty-nine, so you'll see there's a table on page thirty-nine if you go to that Do you see that one?
I do see it.
Okay. It says, rating method used to determine degree of support for an association, right?
Right.
Evidence statement, rating, description, and it goes from A, findings from the body of evidence can be trusted.
Right. Yes.
All the way down to the D, which is how they rated this association between wind turbines and annoyance, and for D, they say, the body of evidence is weak and findings cannot be trusted. Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. But if we go to, let's go to your slide twenty-two.
Okay.
You say, "Scientific studies have shown wind turbine noise to be annoying to a substantial percentage of the population." Which scientific studies are you referring to?
Well, I had a number of slides on annoyance last evening, I think a lot of them are in there, I think all of them are there.
Okay. Was, I think one of them was a study by somebody named Carmen Crowe, K R O G H?
It could have been in there, what slide, do you know what slide that was? I can, I guess I shouldn't ask you, I should.
It's, there are several slides, her name pops up a couple of times.
Well, slide seventeen begins the section on annoyance, and there are a number of studies indicated there. Eighteen annoyance from wind turbine noise.
You're familiar with Ms. Crowe, right?
Yes, I don't know her personally, but I agree with her work, a number of reviews, basically.
I know your copy of the Wisconsin Wind Sighting Council report is, or rather, disheveled right now, so I'm just going to read you something from their report, going back to Pleasant Ridge exhibit sixty-one, it's at the top of page three. "There are substantial individual differences in how people report their perception of wind energy systems, and a negative perception affects whether an individual reports adverse health effects that they attribute to wind energy systems. The majority of individuals living near utility-scale wind systems do not report stress, sleep deprivation, or chronic adverse health effects attributed to wind turbines. The strength of these conclusions is complicated by two factors. First, although there are nine publications on surveys of individuals living near wind turbines, the conclusions from two studies are of limited scope. For instance, one article by Taylor at AL 2013 surveys individuals living near wind turbines that have a maximum generating capacity of five kilovolts or less," and that's the Taylor study we talked about before, right? That's the small turbines.
It is.
Right. "These turbines are thus substantially smaller than a typical utility-scale turbine, and the conclusion of that survey may not be applicable to the usual wind health discussion." And we've gone over that, you agree with that?
I agree with that.
Right. A second survey by Crowe at AL 2011 was only conducted near existing wind systems where anecdotal reports of health effects have been reported. Therefore, without a control group and due to the use of biased survey questions, it is difficult to apply that study's conclusions to other wind projects. Indeed, the bias introduced in the Crowe at AL 2011 survey results in reports of negative effects, sleep disturbance and headache attributed to wind turbines by over seventy percent of participants, which is unusually high compared to other studies where negative effects were reported. The limitations of available research confines the council's survey to only seven permanent, unbiased, cross-sectional studies, three of which use the same dataset." And then at the bottom of that same page, page three, they say, "Based on the available literature, what the council can reasonably conclude is that some individuals residing in close proximity to wind turbines perceive audible noise and find it annoying. A small subset of these individuals report that this noise negatively affects their sleep and may result in other negative health effects. However, based on objective surveys near wind energy projects, it appears that this group is in the minority and that most individuals do not experience annoyance, stress, or perceived adverse health effects due to the operations of wind turbines." And you agree with that statement, right?
I'm sorry, what part of that statement? The last part?
"This group is in the minority and that most individuals do not experience annoyance, stress, or perceived adverse health effects due to the operation of wind turbines."
Did I say annoyance in my slide, I forget, and I know most people don't report adverse health effects, and less than fifty percent certainly report annoyance.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, this, maybe I read this one too quickly, because this one doesn't say report, I'll read it again.
Okay, well...
"It appears that this group is in the minority and that most individuals do not experience annoyance, stress, or perceived adverse health effects due to the operation of wind turbines."
To get to the word experience, I think you have to have self-report with the concept of annoyance, I mean, how else would one get to determine whether, how one is annoyed if you don't ask it? There's no physiological measure.
Do you disagree with that statement I just read to you twice?
I, that's what they said.
And I'm asking, do you disagree with it?
If the implication is that very few people report annoyance from wind turbines, or even adverse health effects, I'd say a non-trivial number do report and experience adverse health effects and annoyance.
We'll get to that in a few moments, assuming we have time tonight. What I'm asking is, if you disagree with the statement that this group is in the minority and that most individuals do not experience annoyance, stress, or perceived adverse health effects due to the operation of wind turbines, I simply ask you if you agree or disagree with that statement.
Well, I can't, I don't know how experience is measured here, if not through self-report, and other studies of self-reporting indicate that a number of people are annoyed, and I have no problem, so it's hard for me to say.
So you don't know if you agree or disagree?
I don't know if I agree or disagree.
Okay, that's fair.
Mr. Blazer, just, I hate to interrupt, and I've been searching through this, Pleasant Ridge exhibit two eighty-one, that you've given to us. I don't see this referenced anywhere within his, his presentation, nor on his literature site or references, can you?
I'm reading from Pleasant Ridge exhibit sixty-four, the Wisconsin Wind Sighting Council.
I understand, I understand, but two eighty-one, I'm trying to decide the validity, whether this evidence, he, you're adding this, are you not?
I'm...
Did he make reference to this within his presentation?
To annoyance?
No, to Pleasant Ridge, or to, to this specific study.
Pleasant Ridge exhibit sixty-four?
Two eighty-one. Two eighty-one, this big, thick...
That's not what I'm reading from.
I understand, okay. I, yeah, I've been looking for ten minutes to try to find, that's why.
That one is referenced in exhibit sixty-four, the Wisconsin Wind Sighting Council report. That's one of the studies that they said they were waiting for.
Okay. I'm looking for the connection.
Oh, I, yeah, you remember I referenced two footnotes that they said they were ready for, the Health Canada study and that Australian report?
Okay, move on, thank you.
Back to your slide twenty-three. Okay, all right. And it's your question three, can psychological expectations, i.e. the...
Yes, I'm sorry, that's number twenty-three, is it? Psychological, oh, question three.
Question three on slide twenty-three.
In my slide, was it?
No, I may have the wrong page. Let me just read it. "Can psychological expectations, i.e. the Nocivo effect satisfactorily explain AAGs from wind turbine noise?" Which are a slight...
Twenty-six.
Sorry, twenty-six. I can only blame myself. You do know that the Nocivo effect is a recognized psychogenic effect based on the patient's expectations and perceptions, correct?
I can believe that, yes.
Okay. And are you aware that the Nocivo effect can have both psychological and physiological
Well, I'm not a medical doctor, of course, and, but I do know that psychosomatic illnesses exist.
Okay. Nocivo effect was discovered long before the advent of utility-scale wind turbines, right?
Yes, frankly, I've not heard of it until I got interested in wind turbines.
But in, in the course of your study, you learned it's been around for a very long time, right?
Right.
I hope I got the slide number right on this one, slide twenty-nine. I hope I got the slide number right on this one. Slide 29. "While psychological expectations and the power of suggestion."
That's right.
All right, this one I got right. "Conceivably can influence perceptions of the effects of W T N on health status. No scientifically valid studies have yet convincingly shown that psychological forces are the major driver of such perceptions." What do you mean by scientifically valid?
Well, I went through my criticisms rather hurriedly last night, you know, why I thought these studies were poorly designed.
That's not, that's not my question. My question is, what did you mean by the phrase "scientifically valid"?
Studies that follow scientific principles, using the scientific method, yielding repeatable, reliable results, stating methodologies that are consistent with, certainly with reason, which I don't think these were, not using infrasound intelligence, and the reader that they're using infrasound, and you really didn't, I don't believe they used any infrasound in one of their conditions, to give the subjects any basis for comparing with the sham or no infrasound condition.
I'm not just talking about the Nocivo studies, I'm talking about any studies. So, for example, do you consider the Health Canada study a scientifically valid study?
I'd have to go further into it to really tell you whether I would define it as scientifically valid. I don't have a final answer there, and I think it's up to individual researchers to, to, to define it, and I would basically define it, as I said, by using recognized scientific tools, using hypothesis testing typically, using methodologies that are up to date.
So you don't know if the Health Canada study is a cited as you described it?
It was when I read it, it seemed to be.
Okay.
But I can't tell that from the report.
How about the Australian study, the 281, the NHMRC study? Is that a scientifically valid study?
Rapley doesn't think so.
I'm not, I'm not asking about somebody named Rapley, I'm asking about somebody named Punch.
I don't think it's well-designed, I don't think it's, I think it makes assumptions that aren't valid.
Have you conveyed your concerns to the government of Australia?
No.
All right. When you report, when you wrote your report for the state of Michigan, our exhibit 269, you were looking for peer-reviewed studies, right? We went over that statement.
That was a committee report, and we as a committee had to compromise on language, and we used that term, we said it in the context of it was our desire to look at as much scientific, as much peer-reviewed studies as possible. I, as a researcher on that committee, was not happy with the limited number of studies that we actually reviewed. And I tried to get us to do more of that by assigning individual members of studies to come and talk about it at the meetings.
Did you file an minority report?
I did.
Where is it?
It's on the, online. If you Google Punch Roseland wind turbines, I think you'll find it.
Let's see what you said in the, or what the committee said in its overall report, the committee that you chaired. Back to exhibit 269.
May I have to denote that you say it's a report, it was one of the draft reports, but it was never submitted as an official document to the Michigan State Government.
All right, and the three people who were on that committee wrote that report, right?
The minority report?
No, the committee that you chaired issued that report, right?
There were more than three people on the overall committee, I think there were seven, there were three who wrote the minority report.
All right, well, the three people, I think we covered this a while ago already, there are three people identified as the people involved in that report. You're one of them, right?
Right.
Okay. Let's go to page two, limitations on the noise. "We recommend that municipalities base their decisions about noise limitations on the best available peer-reviewed scientific evidence." We've covered this before.
Yes, it was our recommendation.
Before. The, the next paragraph there. "It is also important to recognize that there is no published peer-reviewed literature showing the absence of a link. This issue should be periodically revisited by interdisciplinary experts as future peer-reviewed evidence become available." Is the group that generated the Health Canada study a group of interdisciplinary experts?
I believe it is, as I told you, I don't know the people involved, but from their titles, it appears to be the case.
271. Dr. Punch, have you seen Pleasant Ridge exhibit 271 before?
I've never seen this document.
I'll represent to you that this is a peer-reviewed study that was published in Frontiers in Public Health on November 11, 2014, just a couple of months ago.
I've heard about it, I just haven't seen it.
Okay. And let's look at the abstract rather than reading the whole thing.
Okay.
"In this paper, we argue that health complaints are more likely to be explained by the Nocivo response whereby adverse effects are generated by negative expectations." And that's, that's classically the description of the Nocivo response, right? I'm asking if you agree, just asking if that's the classic description.
Yes, that's the classic description.
Okay. "When individuals expect a feature of their environment or medical treatment to produce illness or symptoms, then this may start a process where the individual looks for symptoms or signs of illness to confirm these negative expectations." And. I'm gonna object, this is the exact same kind of question that is not allowed to ask of Pleasant Ridge's experts when they had not seen the report or had not reviewed it or analyzed it in testimony or elsewhere.
All right, that is correct. We, if you hadn't seen the information, you hardly could question me on it, so.
Well, if I may be heard on that, Mr. Cornell. This witness has said repeatedly that he conducts an unknowing review of the literature, and he claims he hasn't seen this one before. But this is a recent study that, and he's testifying here as evidently an expert on any number of things, and he's made any number of claims about the applicability or lack thereof of the Nocivo effect. And I think we are absolutely entitled, since he's been tendered as an expert, to question him regarding his opinions regarding a very recent article on the very subject that he's testifying on.
This is the exact same argument I had.
It's absolutely not, it was two months ago. Okay, it's absolutely the same. Because you asked.
Oh, Dr. Blazer, here we go. Here's my decision on it. My decision is, you can put it in evidence. If Dr. Punch has the opportunity to come back, or he, he needs to come back, you can ask him questions about it at that point in time.
Fair enough.
The Pleasant Ridge exhibit 271 says what it says. He can review it, we can question later if, if that happens.
I, I believe we've already discussed, he is gonna be coming back, so we'll deal with it, that's fine, I understand, thank you. Let's go to slide three, recent professional experience.
Okay.
And you've got public comments, presentations to zoning boards and commissions in several Michigan counties.
Yes.
Do you keep track of wind development in Michigan?
Uh, yes, to some extent. I don't keep logs, written documentation, I I just try to be aware. It starts with sometimes the newspaper accounts of what's going on in the state, for example.
So, and you've testified this, this is just deleted. Slides five to eight, that's your discussion about the Michigan Wind One project, right?
Sorry, oh, yes, five to eight?
Right, five.
That's right, that's right.
That's the forty-six turbine, sixty-nine level one project.
It's really about the family who lives in.
Right, I see. But this was the first utility-scale wind project in Michigan, right?
It was.
And it started operation in December of 2008?
Must be about right news.
Okay. And are you familiar with the current status of wind development in Michigan?
I know it's expanding greatly.
Two ninety-seven. Now, I'll represent to you that this was a a report that was issued by the Pew Institute. It's called Pew Michigan Policy Brief. And just a quick question. First, I'll just call your attention to something, then I'll ask you a question. That potentially has nothing to do with that document. Page two, it says, "Total capital investment in renewable energy from 2009, which would be the year following the Michigan Wind One project that you testified about. Total capital investment in renewable energy from 2009 to 2013 topped $2 billion and is expected to grow to $3.5 billion by 2015. From 2009 to 2013, more than one ginawatt of new wind capacity was installed. Almost ninety-five percent of the total clean energy added in those five years." So I'd like to go back to page twenty-two. Excuse me, slide twenty-two of your presentation. And it says, "Scientific studies have shown that wind turbine noise to be annoying to a substantial percentage of the population," right?
Right.
Where is that substantial percentage of the population among all those wind farms in Michigan?
Well, I've dealt with.
Objection, relevance? I don't, first of all, objection to the form of the question, I have no idea what he's asking. And secondly, the fact that Michigan may have approved under whatever standards, we heard that I'm not allowed to ask about Wisconsin standards a number of times, and whether Michigan, under whatever standards, approving is completely irrelevant. I'm not asking him about, about the Michigan approval statements. This person said that a, "Scientific studies have shown that wind turbine noise to be annoying to a substantial percentage of the population." And I'm asking him, where that substantial percentage is in his home state that has seen this dramatic growth in wind turbine development between his first project and today? I'm asking him, where are the people who are so annoyed? Well, objection is the foundation.
I think that two ninety-seven. I'm not sure. If, if you want to ask him about the validity of the statement on twenty-two, ask him about the validity of the statement. We, we don't need to talk about Michigan and their rapid expansion of wind energy. Let's talk about, if you want to know about the scientific studies, ask that question. We're, we're done, we're done talking about two ninety-seven. Okay.
And I was done talking about two ninety-seven. My, my question very simply is, among all the wind development in Michigan, which you've said you've kept abreast of, where is the substantial percentage of, of the population that is annoyed by noise from wind turbines? Same objection.
Don't answer that, we're moving on.
All right. Let's go to your slide thirty-one. "Wind turbine noise causes A A Gs." That's your slide, right?
Thirty-one. Yes, followed by, what, and where is the evidence?
Right. And one of your bullets says, "Expert testimony in legal proceedings in USA and other countries." Correct?
I am assuming other countries, because I know a lot of legal things have gone on, legal proceedings have gone on there. Public is, it has been public outcry, so I certainly haven't been personally involved with those. But it's, it's a general statement that a lot of legal testimony has been given.
Right. And that's part of the basis for your statement that wind turbine noise causes A A Gs, correct?
Part of it.
Okay. And last night, you said you didn't bring any of those reports of legal proceedings with you, is that right?
I, I did say that, I did not bring them, I mean, that's a lot of material, I, I don't have all of them anyway, I mean, I have some from other places, other states.
Well, last night, you said it's too tedious, do you remember that?
Probably, I mean, I probably said that.
But I assume you at least have read, read at least some of these expert testimony in legal proceedings in USA and other countries?
I have them on my office computer, basically, yes.
Okay. Let's go back to the discussion of what may constitute a scientifically valid study. Slide thirty-four.
Okay.
And this is where you talk about Pierpont's book?
Yes.
And do you consider that a scientifically valid study?
I do.
All right.
It's an observation study.
Slide nine. And that's your, the reference to your Audiology Today article, is that right?
Yes.
Actually, yours and your friend, Rick James, correct?
My colleague, Rick James, a student.
Okay. Now, this article, Audiology Today is a non-refer, non-referenced journal, correct?
I did make the point tonight when I talked about peer review process, but all journals, to some extent, are, are read by somebody else before it's accepted. It is not probably acceptable in the vernacular today of what a peer-reviewed study is if you take a very technical view of, of an optimal peer-reviewed process that I first described tonight. So I would say it's, it's not, I've never really said it was a peer-reviewed article, but it is like Psychology Today, like Acoustics Today, and some very reputable people publish articles. The president of the Academy of American Audiology was the one who peer-reviewed this one.
Well, you, you know that you previously identified this article as appearing in a non-referenced journal, correct?
Non, well, okay, yeah. And, and as I just said, it's really not by most people, but I don't, I'm not that black and white, I'm sorry, but what was great of me.
All right. Now, that article of yours in Audiology Today came out in 2010, right?
That's right.
And that was before the, the two sixty-nine, the report for the state of Michigan, correct?
Based on the data you gave me, yes, I, I think I, that sounds right.
Okay. Exhibit two ninety-two is your article, right?
It appears to be, yes.
And you and Rick James, and I believe you said a student, wrote this?
We did.
Okay. If you could go to page twenty-four.
Okay.
The paragraph that starts the energy generated by large wind turbines, do you see that?
Yes.
Yes. "The energy generated by large wind turbines can be especially disturbing to the vestibular systems of some people, as well as cause other troubling sensations of the head, chest, or other parts of the body. Dr. Nina Pierpont, 2009, in her definitive natural experiment on the subject, refers to these effects as wind turbine syndrome, W T S. Table one lists the symptoms that in various combinations characterize W T S. Although hearing impairment is not one of the symptoms of W T S, audiologists whose patients report these symptoms should ask them if they live near a wind turbine." So, is it correct that you consider what Pierpont did to be definitive?
Well, I've been questioning that before, and I understand your, I think I understand where you're coming from legally.
I don't know if I understand where I'm coming from.
It was definitive, it was definitive, I think, in the sense that it was kind of first to put a name on, label on the phenomenon. I don't know that addic degree is a syndrome, I think it is, I think there are a number of people who have a combination of symptoms which define a syndrome. Other people have stayed away from that name because of the publication out of Pierpont. But I don't think it's a. But I don't think it's a final answer, so it's not definitive in the sense of being final.
Go to your slide 36. You say the, I'm sorry, are you there?
I am.
You say the wind industry, partially critical of her study, per referring to Pierpont, right?
Yes.
As being non-scientific, but increasing body of scientific evidence supports her observations, and they're linked to wind turbine noise, as well as mechanisms responsible for symptoms. Correct?
Correct.
You do know it's not just the wind industry that has been harshly critical of Pierpont's work as being non-scientific-
That's true.
Let me finish.
Sorry.
You do know that it's not just the wind industry that has been harshly critical of Pierpont's work as being non-scientific, right?
I would say, I believe that advocates for the wind industry have been the ones who are most harshly critical of her work.
This is the book, right? There it is, Wind Turban Syndrome.
Okay.
Right? You read it?
I read a pre-publication copy. I don't know how much it was changed, but I did read it.
So you've never read the final published version?
Not, oh, no, no.
Well, when did you read that pre-publication copy?
It was after Huron County, my visit to Huron County.
So it was sometime in 2009?
It sounds about, it was right before it came out. I think, my impression at least, whether it's right or wrong, was it was about to come out very soon.
How did you find out that it was about to come out?
Uh, probably through Rick James.
Well, and-
Then I began to have conversations online with Nina Pierpont.
And Rick James participated in the book, right?
I don't know the involvement, he might have been a reviewer. There were a number of reviewers of that book, so by that definition, it was peer reviewed.
Well, you're not aware that Ms. Pierpont actually refers to information that she obtained from Rick James?
Oh, yes, yes, I do recall that, yes.
And Pierpont and her husband have a website called Wind Turban Syndrome, right?
Yes.
And Mr. James has been a frequent contributor to that site? Are you aware of that, right?
I don't know how to, whether he's a voluntary contributor. I'm aware that some of his work might appear there, which may have nothing to do with his contributions.
Well, and some of, some of your work has appeared on that site as well.
Again, same thing. I didn't put it there, I didn't ask that it be put there.
Are you saying you've never voluntarily posted any comments on that, on that website?
I don't know. Maybe I have to. If I did, I'm sure you probably have them.
You did, and I do, but I think that, I think that'll take care of that.
Okay. I don't recall it, but I, it's not, doesn't surprise me that I might have.
We're gonna, we're gonna go along just fine. All right. Now, last night, you said, she published a book, and yes, it was self-published. The wind companies like to point that out in 2009. The transcript says quoting, but I believe you said coining, the term wind turbine syndrome. Remember saying that, Mr.?
Something like that, yes.
And the book was put out by a publishing company called Case Selected Books, right?
That's right.
And Case Selected Books has, used to be two, but it's actually only three published books, correct?
I think her and her husband had published books under that company-
Right.
Which is self-publication, essentially.
She's self-published. She wrote this one, and her husb, her husband has two other books that were published by their company.
I believe so.
And she and her husband are two of the four members of that company's editorial board, are you aware of that?
That might be true. I'm not surprised if that's true.
It's an unusual name, but you know her husband's name is Calvin Luther Martin?
Calvin Martin, yes.
Could you go to your slide 13, please? And I just, I'm not gonna read it, this is the slide on preliminary thoughts, perspectives, biases, pro-wind, anti-wind problem. Last night, referring to that slide, you said, "Anti-wind," and I think we would all agree there are at least these two groups, uh, "Don't install wind turbines anywhere." You're saying that's what they're viewing as-
That's how I characterize them anyway.
"Don't install wind turbines anywhere. Wind really isn't an economically viable source of renewable energy anyway, when you look at the financial aspects of it, and all the government subsidies should just simply stop." That's the anti-wind-
That's not what I said myself, that's what I said of the anti-
Of the anti-wind groups. Eric, you're not saying it by yourself, you're saying it to the anti-wind groups. And you do know that Mr. Martin, Pierpont's husband, is a, is an outspoken anti-wind activist, right?
Let me respond this way, I detest the website. I detest the language he uses. I don't think he helps her. I think they're very two separate individuals professionally. That's my opinion. After seeing his language, he uses four-letter words, I wouldn't use those words professionally, certainly. So I don't think he helps her in that sense. So that's my view of the website.
We just found something else we'll review. And what you just referred to, 276. Dr. Punch, when you said he uses four-letter words, it doesn't help her, that's the document you were referring to, is it?
It, I think it actually might be more extensive than this document.
Okay. But you've seen-
I've seen-
Pierpont's husband, the, one of the publishers, one of the members of the editorial board of the company that published her book, writing things like that, right?
But she never does, as far as I know.
That's not my question, sir. You have seen-
Yes, yes, I don't like it.
All right. Now, we're not gonna go through a lot of it, because you're right, it's extremely profane.
It is.
So I'm just gonna ask you a couple of things about that.
Sure. About this document?
About that document, because I'm gonna ask you a couple of your impressions about that. He starts out on page one, "I've been fighting the wind fees," I'll tell you later what that word is, "well over four years, four years devoted to almost nothing else." So now, if you go to pages two to three, he's actually, you can see what he's doing is, this is his impression of how you would write a book about bad wind farm, right?
Essentially, yes.
All right. Chapter five, he says, "Following the rules of public meetings does not work. The meetings are A. a charade, B. a farce, C. a hoax, and the altogether mockery of public participation." And you certainly don't agree with that, right?
Following the rules of public meetings does not work, do I agree with that, is the question?
Yes. Actually, I said you don't agree with that, right?
In general, no, I don't, I don't agree.
Well, are there instances where you do agree?
No, no, I guess I agree that you should follow the rules, or you shouldn't be going to the meeting, or you should try to change the rules.
Okay. And let's see how Pierpont's husband feels about folks who participated in farm projects. That's on page four.
I guess I really want to get to the relevance here, I'm trying to figure it out, and I've tried to give some leeway, but I'm really lost here.
This is the publisher of the book that he's relying on, which he said was self-published by her, by Case Selected Books, the company that she and her husband run. Hey, we're so far from it. No, we're not. No, we're not. He's already admitted that there are anti-wind groups who are biased against wind farms. This is the publisher of the book that he's relying on.
All right. The objection is bounded. This, I understand your, your line of questioning somewhat, but at the same time, we really don't need exhibits like this, even in the record. I think we should strike, I'm gonna make the decision that we're gonna strike Pleasant Ridge exhibit 276, we're throwing it out in the record. The quality of the material is, is absurd, and not anything that's founded or, it's junk. I'm sorry, it's junk. Let's just move on past this.
All right. We just need to move on. Mr. Chairman, I couldn't agree more, it is absolutely junk. Neither can Dr. Punch. Let's make sure we're on the same page about exactly who Mr. Martin's wife is and what she did, okay? First, Pierpont is a pediatrician, right?
Correct.
She's not an epidemiologist, correct?
No, correct.
She's not a neurologist, right? Correct?
I think that's correct.
She's not an otolaryngologist?
That's correct.
And otolaryngologists are also known as EMTs, ear, nose, and throat doctors?
Ear, nose, and throat doctors, yes.
Audiologists routinely work with EMTs, right?
Yes, many others do, and I have.
And speaking of that, she's also not an audiologist, right?
Correct.
Okay. 275. Pleasant Ridge 275, Dr. Punch, are some excerpts from this book that you consider to be definitive. Let's start with page 21. It's the first full paragraph.
Okay.
"For those who read this report and recognize their own symptoms, the appropriate medical specialist to consult would be a neurotologist or otoneuro, or otoneurologist, who is an otolaryngologist, ear, nose, and throat doctor, who specializes in balance the inner ear and their neurological connections." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
All right. "And neurotology is a branch of clinical medicine that studies and treats neurological disorders of the ear," correct?
That's right.
Now, let's go back to the basis for Pierpont's creation of something called Wind Turban Syndrome. Your slide 34. And you say, and you testified to this, the term was coined by Pierpont?
I thought it was, yes.
And just so we're clear, it's-
Yes, right.
Exactly. That name, Wind Turban Syndrome, never existed before she created it, right?
I don't think it did.
Okay. And you're familiar with what she did to reach her conclusion, right?
The case series?
Right.
The interviews with families, yes.
Okay. Now, last night, you said, this is at page 1376 of the transcript last night, "She described symptoms of 38 members of 10 families in New York who came into her practice." That's what you said last night?
I don't mean they walked to the door, but she had, I assume she, many of them came to her, but she heard about it, and my understanding was that, um, she did interview the families. Some of it was phone, I think, and I don't know if she talked to them all person-to-person, I assume if she liked, but I can't just assume it.
I think we'll be able to clarify what you might have meant by came into her practice. On your slide 34, you say, "Findings based on personal interviews," right?
That's why I said, yes.
Well, that's not entirely accurate, right?
Okay. It's been a while since I read the book.
Okay, okay. Well, but that's the statement you made to this board yesterday?
Yes.
Right?
Well, and then, contact, and then getting information through the interview process, is that not correct?
Well, let's write this one. She got information about 37 people, right?
I thought it was 38, but 37 is close.
Well, let's, let's start this way. I'm gonna tell you something first, and then I'm gonna tell you where to find it. She only spoke to 23 of them, and that was on the phone. Do you remember that?
I remember phone wasn't obvious.
That's on page 10 of her book. She says, it's the middle paragraph, one, we'll get to this paragraph, it's entirely interlude, "One being that it was conducted entirely by clinical interview over the telephone." Do you see that?
Okay, I was wrong.
And then if you go to page 41, she says, down at the bottom of the page, under results, "I interviewed 23 adult and teenage members of 10 families, collecting information on all 38 adult, teen, and child family members." Do you see that?
No, I don't, I don't have it.
Bottom of page 41.
Oh, is it in here?
Yeah.
This is a short document, I see, okay.
All right. Under results.
Okay.
So, out of the 37, out of the 37, she only talked to 23, right?
Okay.
Okay. She never met any of these people, is that right?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay.
Okay?
Do you know how she contacted those people?
No, I guess I don't.
Okay. So you don't know that she contacted them by advertising anti-wind, via anti-wind groups for people who blame wind farms for their health issues?
I don't know, no.
Pierpont never conducted an independent medical exam, did she?
Apparently not.
Okay. Going back to page 10, the paragraph that I looked at before, "Even she admitted the limitation of her method," and she, I'll read it, I'll read this for you. "Despite what I see as the virtues of my approach, this study has clear limitations, one being that it was conducted entirely by clinical interview over the telephone. On the one hand, this had the benefit of allowing me to have an international group of subjects. On the other, it limited the type of data I could collect. As a result, my ability to say that a certain symptom during exposure is due to turbines is confined to medical conditions which are diagnosable by medical history." Did I read that correctly?
I wasn't reading along, but I'll assume it is correct.
Okay. But are you aware that despite having said that, she didn't even get medical histories from all the people she talked to?
I'm not aware.
Page 38, Dr. Punch.
I was aware that she had data, which constitutes a case series.
Page 38.
Okay.
Under methods, second paragraph, under methods. "Limited medical records were provided by the adults of families A and B, A1, A2, B1, B2," that's four people, "and by a young man in family C, C4. That totals five people. I requested records for all families through F, but since no more were forthcoming, I stopped asking and pursued those parts of the study not dependent on physical examination or test results, and for which I had a uniform study tool, the interview." And that was an interview of 23 people, right?
Okay.
Now, you do know that, even though you're not an epidemiologist, you do know that a study like this would normally include both a target group and a control group, right?
Yes, by strict epidemiological rules, certainly. I only said that case series was a scientifically valid study, because it's, it is acceptable as an observation of study.
Well, the, the targeted control group study that I asked you about, which is the normal method of doing this, that's called a case control study, right?
Case control.
Okay.
So you have a cohort.
Cohort's a little bit different, but we're close, we're close enough. So you have a group of people who are experiencing the subject condition, whatever, whatever that might be, and that's the target group, right?
Right.
Okay. And then you have a separate group who aren't experiencing that condition, and that's your control.
Control.
Okay. And a qualified doctor would then assess the differences between those two, right?
A doctor and a patient, patient to a doctor relationship, is it in clinic, or this is research, really, I mean, it's a kind of research, observational research.
I'm talking about-
A researcher would make that assessment.
Exactly, the case control study, and an epidemiologist, when you're dealing with health issues, would normally be an MD, right?
Would normally be an MD, yes.
Like Dr. Robinson said, right?
Okay.
Okay. So, now, there's also a different type of study called a randomized controlled trial, an RCT, you referred to those, right?
Yes.
Would you agree that the RCT is the gold standard for clinical tests, clinical trials?
Certainly, yeah, I'm not an epidemiologist, but I certainly, I know they say that, and I'm sure it's true. In our own field, we say that as well.
All right. But as you pointed out, Pierpont did something called a case series, right?
Very different, yes.
Okay. I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna read just it, and ask you if you agree with it. "In medical research and epidemiology, case series are considered the weakest form of study because they have no defined population and no comparison. Do you agree with that?"
They're weak, yes, relatively weak.
Second, unlike studies that employ an analytic design, e.g., cohort studies, case control studies, or randomized controlled trials, case series do not in and of themselves involve hypothesis testing to look for evidence of cause of effect. Do you agree with that?
I do. They're analytic. They're not analytic, I'm sorry.
"Case series are especially vulnerable to selection bias."
That's true.
"And internal validity of case series studies is usually very low due to the lack of a comparative group or control group exposed to the same array of intervening variables." Do you agree with that?
Yes.
All right. Pierpont did say that she used targeted control groups, right?
She did say she used targeted control groups.
That's on page five. At the top of the page. And she says case series don't typically, don't typically have control groups, but actually, his, her control group was the same people as her target group, isn't that right?
I don't know that. I-
Well, here. It's top page five.
I'm not sure how that could be.
Well, I'm not either, but that's what she did. "Nevertheless, I saw I needed a comparison group of similar, though unexposed, people to distinguish which symptoms were due to turbine exposure. The most similar unexposed people, of course, were my study subjects, themselves prior to turbine exposure and after the end of exposure. I therefore set up a before, during, after study format, interviewing families who had already moved out of their homes due to symptoms, or who were planning to move and had already spent periods away from home during which turbine-associated symptoms appeared." So she used the same people for both her target and control.
And that's legitimate in one sense. We call that an ABA group. ABA study, I'm sorry.
Right, I understand. You do know that she didn't interview, much less examine, anyone who wasn't complaining of effects from wind turbines, right?
Yes, I've always been aware of that.
Okay.
Can I understand that there wasn't weaknesses with her study? I just don't wanna discount case series as totally legitimate.
I, I understand what you're trying to do. And she describes, at the, on page thirty-nine, her selection process, and she didn't select anyone who wasn't complaining of symptoms.
Right.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, we're about to start, first of all, there's a lot more to go. I'm about to start another fairly major chunk, and it's almost ninety-three, so. I'll leave that to you as to where you want to go. Clearly, this witness has to come back.
All right. With the, probably the quantity of questions you have, it's probably not worth getting going. It is nine twenty-three. I think it's a good opportunity to break for the evening. I understand Dr. Punch will be back at a later date. Is that correct, Mr. Lucans?
We're going to absolutely try to do that. We have not confirmed that. I guess I would like, for scheduling purposes, to understand relative to how much Mr. Blazer has done, how much left he has, because obviously, you know.
That's a fair question, Mr. Blazer. What's your expectation on, on length of questions and what's left?
Probably two hours or more.
Two additional hours?
I thought I was in here.
What's that?
Thought I was in here. We're dealing with seventy-five pages of presentations, Mr. Chairman. I think you know what this is.
We understand. Okay. All right, Mr. Lucans, confirm for me, next week, we have hearings set for the twenty-sixth and the twenty-ninth.
Yes. We have Mr. Gruen, G-HR, UBN, coming in on Monday. We're still trying to figure out if Mr. Rand will be here Thursday or not, depending on, I still haven't seen anything from Mr. Hanker, that was, we talked about last night. And Mr. Rand has been very unavailable today and tomorrow, so I will not know that until Monday afternoon at the earliest. Just, on that, I'm sorry, on that one issue, Mr. Chairman, the big information that you asked Mr. Hanker to provide by early next week, Mr. Lucans will have it tomorrow.
Okay, you-
I'm not complaining, I'm just trying to-
I understand. Mr. Blazer, I appreciate you expedite that, that process. Okay, Mr. Lucans, you for sure on Monday will have Gruen. That is correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Not, not having a definitive answer on the twenty-ninth, there could be the opportunity for individuals within the community to speak. They would be the ones identified on the list that we have, so there is, there is a chance on the twenty-ninth that individuals within the community will have the opportunity to come up, provide testimony. It will be a testimony-based, just like these witnesses are going through, you come up, present your testimony. We could ask questions to Mr. Lucans, to Mr. Blazer. So, so everybody's under a clear, with that procedure. Chuck, location of the meetings? Okay, the twenty-sixth for everyone. It's at the Ronnie Exhendship High School at six-thirty. Okay, and we'll be back, we'll be back here at the Walden Center on the twenty-ninth at six-thirty. Okay? Okay, I got one question. Yeah, if possible, that, that would be, I mean, obviously, if you wanna explain a chart to us, we need to see it, along with, with Mr. Blazer, Mr. Lucans. We've tried really hard to follow through with that, that's why I have a, a box full of paper here. So, do your best to get us to fifteen. Yeah, anything else?
No, you can do it here.
I have spoken with the gentleman from here, and there is a projector available here, so certainly, if, if, you know, if it looks like Mr. Lucans will know on Monday whether individual will be here on the twenty-ninth, we can make arrangements to make sure that projector's ready to go for anybody to use here on, on the twenty-ninth. All right? Okay, the list that we have here of the individuals that have signed up to speak or present testimony, we're gonna start it in chronological order, and we're gonna work our way right down the list, so it's, it's somewhat imperative that if we decide on Monday that we're gonna take public testimony on the twenty-ninth that you're here, we won't make it all the way through the list, I can't imagine, but be prepared that we may get to you. All right?
Mr. Chairman, just one thing for Monday, Phil. I'm too used to calling him Phil. Phil and I talked beforehand about that event. No offense to, we've been feeling like too long. Anyway, Mr. Gruen, we believe, between the two of us, probably, I'm terrible at estimating, but we're figuring maybe an hour, hour and a half total, so there may be opportunity Monday as well.
Okay.
I may try, I have obviously certain individuals who want to testify, and we may try and fill that in. I'm not, I don't wanna have an hour and a half. No, just wanna have just an hour and a half. I'm gonna try and see if I can locate some people who are willing to testify on that particular night, Monday, and try and get that coming.
My only suggestion is, regardless of that, I, I would suggest to put it out to the public that there may be an opportunity Monday night as well. Because I, I think we're gonna have probably a good hour and a half at that time, otherwise.
Well, I might be welcome. I'm not too sure. All right. Let, let's leave it as it stands for right now. Mr. Lucans, you have some people identified on this list that you may be able to put through a, a series of questions.
And, and some of them I'm just tearing down on this, they're just witnesses, honestly. So, for the extent, we can try and put a couple people in and allow some time. I mean, we'd like to get, like you, we'd all like to not be playing this for the next three months.
Right, agreed. Okay. With that, I need a motion to recess.